All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming out. I'd like to call this regular meeting of La Jolla City Council to order. Today is September 2nd, 2025. The time is now 6:02. If we can all rise for our invitation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather in service of our community, grant us wisdom, patience, and clarity as we make decisions tonight on behalf of the city. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
If you'll stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in uniform with clarity and justice for all.
Mrs. Schofield, roll call please.
Ramirez?
Present.
Malaskin?
Present.
Ariola?
Here.
Wachoa?
Here.
Pantoia?
Here.
Breakoff?
Present.
All right, citizen participation. This is for anybody who wants to talk. You have five minutes per person. Melanie will start the timer when you come up, and then just state your name and address for those watching online.
I'm back. Is it on?
It is.
Douglas Golding, 1316 Lincoln Avenue. I recently attended the Taras of Orange meeting a couple of weeks ago. My vehicle was parked out front of the entry to this building, and somebody sideswiped the whole side. I made a report to the city, or to the police department, and the investigator, when he got back to me, said, there's no cameras pointing. So you might be surprised to know that no, there's no cameras telling you who comes in and out of this building. I think that might be something you want to look at. I don't know where you have cameras pointed, but I would be surprised if you don't want to know who's coming in and out. Old vehicles, I don't have. So I'll live with it. I mean, it's not a, I'm not married to it, so it's not a big deal. It's just, I'm surprised that if you're going to have cameras, you don't have them pointed in places where people would come in and out of the building.
Thank you.
And I also, I didn't know that, noticed that there's vacant council seat there. I'll just say that I'm disappointed to see it vacant. I'm sorry that there aren't allowances, some kind of time allowance for someone that has to change resident seats.
Real quick, the library one doesn't come over here, Michael, do you know? That camera? Because I know we spent money on the one at the library and the other one on top of the old, it's hospice now, one quarter building.
Quarter building, yeah.
I thought those were like some.
Cameras have been ordered.
Oh, that's not what I was asking.
Yeah, but I don't think the camera goes here.
Okay. Can you check that for me? Thank you. Anyone else for citizen participation?
You know, I'm on the agenda later, but I wanted to introduce some guests that we have. I thought it would be nicer if I introduced them and then they could talk for a few minutes. But this is Tracy and Matthew with DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, representing our Main Street. They're here for our annual visit tomorrow, and they heard that there was a council meeting and they wanted to come and say hi, so.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. So Tracy Stoffold, and you're Colorado, not a citizen, but like to come down here as often as my work or personal life will let me. As Pam mentioned, we do get up into our official Main Street communities once a year, and tomorrow is when we'll be meeting with the Main Street Board and kind of touring your downtown, seeing what's going on and seeing how we can help you out. We are non-regulatory, Department of Local Affairs. We are just here to support your community and making your downtown what you envision it to be. And as Pam mentioned, we just wanted to take the opportunity, when we found out, she found out that we were spending the night tonight. She was like, oh, well, you know, council tonight. I was like, can we drop in and just say hi? And just let you know that you are supported by the state of Colorado? And she said, yes. And so Tracy, my colleague Matt. We also have Gail Langley, who is our statewide coordinator, and Larry Lucas, an architect, who is available for support for your community with any of the questions you might have about your build environment, your businesses and need support in your downtown area. That's what we're here for, is just to help you out. And thank you for this time.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I'm Jeremiah Stoker, and since council decided for me, my address is 511 Grant. For people that didn't know, yes, my seat was vacated due to, after I submitted a petition to run for a new ward, even though it's common practice in state and federal elections for people to run for other districts. For example, Lauren Loubert running for Congressional District 4 while she was still representing and residing in Congressional District 3. But that's a moot point. But one of the things I do want to bring up about that is real disappointed. We don't have an agenda item for filling that vacant seat. Like I had said on Thursday, there's a reminder that it is 30 days to fill a seat. And so the fact that we haven't started already, you know, because the council already violated the charter once with the vacant seat, that seat in particular, the seat was vacated in July, never filled, it was filled by election in November, which is beyond 30 days. And so again, don't want that same circumstance to happen, so just kind of want to know when, plan on filling it. But the main reason I came up here today, and I plan on attending the Urban Renewal meeting at the end of the month, but this one is a little bit sooner. It has to go with last Thursday, Urban Renewal meeting, they approved to spend over $5,000, including vinyl window coverings, on what was the old Sears building. Now, my issues with this is, for one, there is no application. So this was a project sought out by Urban Renewal. And Urban Renewal's policy, you know, pertains to blight, you know, which blight, you know, refers, can be referred to in the state statute, remediation of blight and safety or public health issues to stimulate the economic vitality and business development. These funds can be used for code improvement, which includes your electrical plumbing, all your fire issues, you know, sprinklers, fire alarms, fire escapes, additional egress and ingress points, as well as unsafe exterior and interior improvements. And again, this is all part of Urban Renewal's policy, increased commercial tenancy, and it's a necessity benefit building in the public. And this fund, you know, through application, is a reimbursement after owner paid, which my understanding, there's no application or no plans from the owner in the front. This is all Urban Renewal. Going on to the window coverings in particular, there is a section that says funding may not be used for finishes such as paint, flooring, furniture, blinds, lighting fixtures, or anything that would not qualify for blight or life safety. Now, the question I ask is, those windows that are being covered, they're all intact, no cracks or breaks in any of them? So what I want to know is if we do that for one building, if the other businesses see that go up and decide to put in an application to, you know, Urban Renewal for the same things, those applications by rules should be denied. So we're kind of setting a precedence here of, hey, this doesn't apply here, but when Urban Renewal's own policy does state that those things wouldn't qualify. And as long as the windows are intact, I don't see a reason for that to be a blight or safety issue. So I just wanted the council to consider that and maybe, you know, get back, get in touch with Urban Renewal prior to the meeting. But, you know, that is, Urban Renewal is funded by the 1% TIF, and so it should also be the council's due diligence to make sure that those funds are administered properly and to the correct items. So, and that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Anyone else for citizen participation? All right, moving on. Mrs. Dennehy.
Hi, Egan. Hi, Egan. I just wanted to come and report on what's going on with tourism and economic development. Again, Pam Dennehy, Director of Tourism and Economic Development for the city of La Jolla. Most exciting event for us that's coming up is in September, on September 26th and 27th, which is Tarantula Fest. I am excited and sad at the same time to report that our tours are already sold out. It took us less than a month. So it's very exciting that that's happening. We just, we can't accommodate more with us going on the grassland. So we still do have registration open for parade participants, merchant, and food vendors. Merchant vendors are $25, food vendors are $50. I passed around the booklets that we've had printed. These are what we worked on last year, talking about the safety protocols that we have. And so we will distribute these again all throughout, just because it's really important that that messaging fits along with what we're trying to do, because we're inviting so many people here. We're also working with the State Patrol this year to have dedicated troopers that will be patrolling the area. We'll have one trooper on Friday night and two troopers on Saturday night that will be driving around 109 and 350. And that is just to make sure that they don't get pulled off on different calls. We had a lot of people out there, which we're very excited for, but we want to make sure we're not having any incidents with cars or people stopping in the road. So the presence of State Patrol, we think, will really help that. Any questions on Tarantula Fest? We, of course, have our website. The schedule of events is up. The Tarantula Fest committee met today. They're doing a fabulous job. So we hope to have the schedule of events finalized and published this week. Speaking of the website, we, I think I reported at the last meeting that we're going through a refresh of that. The main reason we're doing that is for the backend. It's really kind of wonky since we built the website in 2017. So it's hard to get new restaurants and new businesses added easily. So this will help us be able to do that. And it's just going to give it a fresh new look, being that it's going to be almost 10 years old here in 2027. I wanted to give a quick update on Binsel Fort. We have been working in really close partnership with them. I think I mentioned the last time I was here, we did a destination blueprint program mentorship with them on how we can work with them. We had a different plan before the closure happened, but we pivoted and trying to work with them on communications of how the fort, with the damage to the structure, is being handled and how visitation is now, looks different. So they, I'm excited to announce that just for the past couple of weeks now, they're kind of slowly going into it. They are now allowing public access tours into the plaza. Before, those were guided tours, and they were only, and they still are doing the guided tours, but this now allows for public access to the plaza. So we're really excited about that. We're going to be working with them for Tarantula Fest, too. There's still a limit on how many people they can have, so we're going to be working with them to schedule those guided tours. They're at no charge, but they did see a large increase in people attending during Tarantula Fest. So we're going to be working with them on how best to do that for Tarantula Fest. State of Colorado, Joe had a great idea on a proclamation, and so I looked into that. And so we now have a proclamation from the state of Colorado for Tarantula Trek season. It couldn't be for an event, so we kept it broad and we did a season. We don't have it in our hands just yet. I think we could probably have it for the 15th, and then we could possibly do a city proclamation as well. So just another great way to recognize tarantulas down here. I wanted to share some personal news that I think connects with what I've been working on. I'm honored that I was nominated and selected as a finalist for the Governor's Award for Outstanding Colorado Tourism Champion. So that will, thank you. That's part of the Colorado Tourism Office Governor's Awards for Outstanding Tourism Effort. So that'll be awarded at the Tourism Conference in October. So, thank you. Then I also was nominated and applied and accepted for the Doers and the Makers Fisher Fellowship. That is, I will be part of the 2025 cohort. It is designed to elevate the leadership and impact of extraordinary Coloradans who are deeply rooted in their communities and committed to making a difference, which I try to do for my community, so. Thank you. So that retreat, my first retreat, will be this weekend. Any questions on tourism? Okay, jump right into economic development. So I think Michael reported a couple of months ago on our economic development summit that we had in June. I think that was very successful. We had a lot of great partners that showed up and a lot of great conversation. We had three priorities that came out of that, which was beautifying storefronts in downtown La Jolla, identifying new primary industries to recruit to La Jolla Industrial Park by 2030, reassess and upgrade all aging city infrastructure, water, wastewater streets, electricity, et cetera. One of the projects or the priorities that is moving forward is the beautify storefronts in downtown La Jolla, Main Street, which Tracy and Matt were here to introduce, or to talk about in partnership with Urban Renewal, has been talking about how we beautify the downtown. And vacant buildings has been one of those things we've talked about. So Main Street is partnering on that project for the finals on the windows downtown. I did want to talk briefly a little bit more about the La Jolla Creative Main Street. You guys might have remembered this being called La Jolla Rise back in the day. We took a step back and just wanted to reevaluate and reassess who we are and what we're doing. One of the great things about DOLA and its programming and being a Main Street is they provide us with so many wonderful access to capacity building and to facilitators and strategic planners that can help us. So we were paired with a strategic planner that helped us to talk about this and talk through it. So I passed this document out, and this is what came of that. We're really excited that we also have some tangible goals that we're working on through that. We took a step back and we decided it made more sense to just be the La Jolla Creative Main Street, because we also are a creative district. Both of those designations come with some funding. Creative Districts is through Colorado Creative Industries, and of course, Main Street, as Tracy and Matt mentioned, is through DOLA. So the goals there are, as you can see on the strategic plan that I handed out, are to activate downtown, build lasting partnerships, and spruce up La Jolla. And if you turn on the back page, it really goes into all the details of how we look to do that. The other thing I really liked about this document is we were really talking about how Creative Main Street works, how tourism works, how economic development works, how Urban Renewal works, how CLG works, and where all those kind of cost points are. So I feel like this was a first step in kind of getting us to that economic development summit, that then we talked to the larger level of where we were, who we were lucky to have a facilitator that was provided by DOLA, who did a phenomenal job to get us to those three goals. So we're very fortunate not to be a Main Street and excited that this came out of it, and feel like we have a really good blueprint of how to move forward. There's a lot of funding opportunities in addition to the funds that we get from DOLA for additional grant funding, that now that we have this plan, we can look at the back and say, okay, this project fits here and this project fits there. I did want to mention another project that we're still, I mentioned last time, it's the RTAP, the Rural Technical Assistance Program. I think you might remember being part of those conversations. We've moved into phase three of that, which is implementation. We also have goals there. And I'm sure I knew all these goals, because I think they're all building on all the conversations we're having, and they fit together. And it feels like we're starting to move in that same direction of the priorities and goals. Our RTAP goals were to revitalize downtown and expand economic opportunities, strengthen collaboration, community engagement, volunteership, and partnership, enhance outdoor recreation infrastructure and programming, and destination marketing promotion of outdoor and cultural assets. As a reminder, the RTAP program was in partnership with the OREC Department, Outdoor Recreation Department from the state of Colorado. So that would have more of an outdoor rec focus, and so that's why our goals are a little bit more tailored to that. The other thing that I'm working on that I feel ties really well into this is the Brownfields, see, I said it right? I always try to add an S in the wrong place. Brownfields Grant. This is a grant that the city of La Jolla has had since 2022. Michael and I and Martin have all kind of adopted it, or, what's the right word?
We're getting through it.
We're getting through it. We've kind of all taken it on at different levels. So we were, we're learning about it. We're about halfway through the grant. We've spent about half of the money. It's a very, very technical grant that we are learning about. There's a lot of great opportunities to look at all of these goals that we've set out to see how then the Brownfields Grant can help us accomplish in school. It's very much around asbestos abatement, yes, that's a part of it, but there's so much more to this grant that we're learning. There will be an economic development market study that's going to come out of this that's going to give us some hard numbers that we can really point to and make some informed decisions on. So I went through all of these kind of in detail just to hopefully connect that all of the work that's been being done is kind of building on the last thing, and I feel like they're, all the goals go together, and we're working together, all of the different organizations or different groups towards the same goal. That's all I have. Any questions? I mean, for the report. I could speak for an hour, probably, and. Oh, I also have posters. If anybody would like these posters to display anywhere, these are our posters that were also printed. The QR code goes to our Tarantula Trek. This one really talks about the language, yes. The language that we talk about, plan ahead for safe healing, respect private property, be with care, protect our habitat and heritage, and be Tarantula expedition ready. So I have these as well.
Thank you, Pam. Yeah, I have a good idea here and there, but you always execute them, too. So thank you for, you know, listening and getting it done all the way. Do you want to talk more, just a quick bit, about Main Street and the Urban Renewal project? Just so the council is more aware in case it comes up next.
Yeah, so we, out of the economic development summit, and Melanie can help me from the money, funding standpoint. All of these groups got together, there were 28 people, and they identified three, like I said, the three goals. And the beautify storefronts in downtown La Jolla was one that came up as a high priority. And what we were asked by our facilitator to do was then basically assign or volunteer what group we felt fit. Urban Renewal seemed like it was a good fit. It does talk about economic vitality within Urban Renewal. I know blight and safety is a piece of that. But the economic development, or the economic vitality piece is a big piece where I think that Main Street and Urban Renewal saw the crossroads there. Of course, I'm wearing the economic development hat and the Main Street, so then economic development is at the table as well. But then these conversations came after a presentation, actually, that Martin Montoya gave to Urban Renewal concerning the vacant buildings that were in our downtown. And that was another conversation that was, how do we move on those? And how do we make it look, better fine, I think was one of the words, but beautifying it and that can help with the economic vitality of our community. So the idea behind this was, when you're sitting at, and I will do a little sidebar here, one of the things we were able to fund from Main Street through a grant was what we're calling a parklet. And I think I might have mentioned this, that this is, we had it built, we were able to get it done with a grant. It's going to take up two parking spots, and it's going to be in front of the Kava Shop. The design was from the Brownfields Grant. But that economic vitality around being able to be at a restaurant, sit outside and eat, well, when you're sitting outside and you're eating at the Kava Shop, you're staring at a window that has brown paper in the windows. So it's not very inviting. And that was, that was where that goal came from, and so there was a lot of excitement behind that. And how the buildings were selected were based on the buildings on the vacant buildings list within downtown, because Main Street was part of this.
It was a joint meeting?
It was a joint meeting. We've had two joint work sessions, and then it was approved in Urban Renewal from a funding standpoint. We are hoping from Main Street to be able to get grant funding to move forward with that, but we're really hoping to get this done by Tarantula Fest, just because we have a lot of tourists in town. And so we, you know, let's do it right and get it done. And while we have a lot of people in our community, we're hoping the parklet will be up as well. So that's where that goal came from. The buildings were identified in a work session of the ones where there were owners in town that we thought would be the most viable, and that's how those were selected. Given on the actual Main Street, the definition of Main Street is broader than just Colorado, but that's kind of where we focused on that first work session with Urban Renewal and Main Street. So from a funding standpoint, you know, Urban Renewal moved forward with that. But again, I keep using the word economic vitality, and I feel like that fits into part of that with Urban Renewal as well. And of course, that is one of the pillars for Main Street that we try to prioritize as well.
You're working with heirs, hires for that project?
For the vinyl?
No, for the Kava Shop.
Well, no, we worked actually with a local contractor who built it. We spent all but, I think, $200 of the grant locally, so we had a local contractor build the parklet. We bought all of the furniture. So the parklet is kind of separate that was paid for. I mentioned that just as another project that Main Street's doing, but I think the Urban Renewal final that was being brought up, that is not anything to do with heirs. That, but the, that would be printed locally as well.
Is the parklet mobile, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and there's, well, I'm going to have to ask Martin how mobile it is after they put it down the first time. It's big. It's 15 by 12. So it's large. So we'll see how mobile and how often. But yes, we'll, we won't leave it out in the winter with all the elements that are storing it down at the, what is that called?
Warehouse.
The warehouse, thank you. And it's covered and it has all those things in there. We're getting it, using the wrong word, because I don't treat it as a word, but.
Warehouse.
Yeah, so when it's polyurethane, I think. And once that's done, we'll put it out. Like I said, the goal is to have that out for Tarantula Fest. Any other questions?
I see you guys had more questions about the parklet, too. It's not something I've ever heard of before. So is it like a pop-up park? Would that be a synonymous?
No, and I don't, a parklet's actually not a really, I don't know why it's called that.
Because it goes in the parking space?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But it takes up two, it's a wooden structure.
Okay.
It basically looks like a deck, if you will, that you come out and you can, it'll be able to be fit and leveled so that you can walk in. It'll be in front of the Kava Shop. We, through the Brownfields Grant, this was an idea that was drawn up for them. So we approached her and asked her if she would be our guinea pig, for lack of a better word. So she's working through it. And we had money from a fiscal year that needed to be spent, and we were able to do that. And we were able to do that and get it done. And now we're, we'll kind of figure out how temporary and how mobile and all of the things to do that. Yeah. So look for that in the next month. It's exciting. It'll be fun to have. Yeah.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks.
Did they account for that six inch drop between the street and the gutter?
They did. The contractor actually, and this is where it goes beyond me, but he added some extra inches so that however they need to level it out. But they did take that into account. That's, that was one thing that him and Martin discussed. Yeah.
Then Paul, how about?
I think with two municipal lots that are close, oh, sorry. With the two or three municipal lots located downtown, is there any thought to having more parklets for more of the restaurants or dining areas or even the bars? Since we could encourage people to use the municipal lots, that would free up more room for parklets, right?
Yeah, yes, there absolutely is. This is what we're calling our pilot to see how it works and how it's accepted from a fact that we are taking up some parking spots. So we're doing this slowly. You know, our contractor, it was I and A construction. They did an amazing job just by us sharing that. And we've even talked about if there's a way that we can work with OJC to build some of these in the future. So I think that if it works well, we would absolutely love to do that for more of the restaurants, bars, all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again, Pam. You're going to be back. So then we'll move on to our consent agenda, which is just the minutes. Do we have a motion on that?
A motion to be approved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes 6-0. All right, new business. Mrs. Aliza.
Set the timer, Mel.
You have five minutes.
No, I have three minutes and 32 seconds. Okay, so here is the 2026 budget. As always, the city manager will provide a budget to the city council by September 12. And I asked Michael if he wanted to stand here and he said, you go for it. So here I am.
She's super excited about it all.
I am. I love it.
You saw she ran up, right? Yeah, she asked multiple times.
So the budget will be available online tomorrow so everybody can access it. The first thing I wanted to go over real quick was the inserts I gave you. That is, anybody can ask for it. It's me summarizing what's in the budget. But you have your revenue and your expenses for each of the funds. And then it says plus or minus. If there's nothing there, it's balanced. If there's a negative, it means we're taking from savings. And if there's a positive, that means we're putting back into savings. It's the same thing when you go through the budget and you see transfer to or from retained earnings. I just made it a nice little glance for you. I want you to notice that economic, I'm sorry, Pam, do an economic development. Economic development, as you can tell, is in the negative. It has savings and for 2026, we are going to use those savings to fund economic development on its own while they make changes to property management's leases and all of that. And they work out everything that's going on there. So I just want to point that out. And then on the enterprise funds, you have the depreciation. So if there is a positive number and then you have your depreciation and it's still a positive number, that shows that we have fully funded depreciation, which as you recall, the auditors have mentioned that we haven't done that before. The other thing I want to point out is that if your plus or minus is due to capital projects, then you are funding depreciation. And I'm happy to say that all of our enterprise funds, except for property management and internal services, are funding depreciation. And that is a wonderful thing that hasn't happened in a very long, long time. And so I think that's a positive for Michael and the supervisors involved. And if you'll notice, the general fund is balanced as well. So with that said, I'm going to quickly go through. Section one is just a summary on page one. And then you have your three-year comparison and then your five-year for the enterprise funds. Section two is your general fund breakdown. And if you go to the last page in section two, you will see the department breakdown. Everybody liked that. Section three is all of your enterprise funds. But I did it a little different based on the meeting we had where I was putting the retained earnings in and it looked balanced, but nobody followed it. So if you see, I'm just going to go with internal services. You'll see your revenue, which is 1711. And then you have your expenses is 2370. And so transfer from fund balance is $659,000. And so you can tell that we are going to take from savings. So if that number is negative, that means we're adding to savings. And I'll just point out water and sewer are negative. So we are putting into savings. Then you have your pink section, which is just your one-year capital. This is the capital that we budgeted for 2026. You have your blue section, which is your five-year planning. And then you have the white pages in the back. And this is the line item budget worksheets. And this is where you can look at every single line item in the budget and ask questions and request changes. For council, there is a blue sheet, which is a payroll summary that I have put in the back of your books because you requested it in the past. Minimum wage right now is 1481 and next year it will go to 1625. So there is an increase in minimum wage. There will also be another mandated salary increase. We won't know the specifics on that until November. So we did our best guess met based on history. We did give raises to some employees and also the supervisors with what we, we didn't give raises. We projected budgetary raises. So they haven't been given. I apologize for that. So they could be if necessary. We did a 3% increase for employees that have not had an increase in two years. So not everybody was budgeted. And that is the budget in a nutshell. And we will have to plan a budget public hearing. And at that time, I'll do like a 10-minute thing for the public. And then we'll have public discussion and then you guys do your conversation. How much time do we have?
Be grateful.
One minute.
Yes.
You're over budgeted on time.
Actually, this was, this was the most wonderful budget I think I've done in such a long time because we didn't have to use that third week to make cuts. When we walked out of the budget meetings, when Michael was done talking to supervisors and we walked out, it was balanced. And that just shows the dedication to the supervisors. He had a conversation about wants and needs and I think it really made a difference. This was, it was just, I mean, I'm like, dude, you're balanced. We're done. And it's like, cool, get out. And I was like, yeah. So, I mean, it was just, it was just wonderful. And so I want to point that out. And if you look under street department, you'll also notice this budget has $400,000 to streets. Couldn't make it more. But everybody gave and then we also estimated a higher sales tax because we've been hit with a seven million mark. So that made a huge difference. So this was wonderful. I fully enjoy budget season. Well, I haven't met you guys yet, but prior to that, it was great.
Just so you guys know, this is a lot to look at. So we got to make sure we go through it. We set a date separate from council just to have Alisa and the department heads here so we can go through this and make sure that we're all, it looks great right now off the bat. But just fine tune it a little bit more and make sure.
Yes. And I think that 10 to 15 minutes worked really well last year and then discussion from you guys. So I was just going to duplicate what I did last year and then you would be able to have conversation.
Question. The revenue projection is significantly higher. And just wondering if you can tell me which page to look at, what the sources of revenue are.
For general fund?
For the general fund, yes.
A half a million of that is, is sales tax. A half a million. We estimated, actually, I'm sorry, a million dollars of that is sales tax. Because we estimated $6,050,000 this year. And I'm going to hit the seven million mark. And so we went and raised that to seven million. I always downplay revenues, but I, I looked at it and we've hit seven. We're going to hit seven. There's no reason not to budget seven. So that was a million dollars right there.
Just the difference between 11 million and 18 million, what's the other? I mean, I can.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a $6 million grant for the airport.
There you go. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So whenever you guys let me know, we'll go ahead and have the budget hearing. And it is a budget hearing, right?
Yes, it's a budget hearing.
I kind of.
It is a participation.
He educated me and I now know the difference.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
If I could.
I do want to give some more appreciation to all the supervisors. They did a great job in coming in with their, with their needs and other wants. So this was a really good process that we all went through. Again, Lisa was happy the entire time. She didn't yell at me at all. So that was nice. But we got to take care of and again, look forward to work with y'all and to fine tune it and get it approved.
Any questions for? All right, Dawn, you are up, ma'am.
Since Alisa was short, we did a lot more trying to get.
Oh, that's not cool.
Mine shouldn't take long at all. So in April of this year, we had a site visit by C. Don, who administers our 5311 grant, which is a pass-through grant from the FTA, which is the Federal Transit Administration. And they said to us, you need to update your drug and alcohol testing policy. And we said, well, of course we do. They gave me a template and that's exactly what we did. This was not my, my brainchild. We filled in the blanks. In order for us to continue to receive federal funding, we have to do this. Their rules, the FTA rules, say that the governing body has to adopt or approve this. The other two policies that we have is the federal motor carriers policy, which governs all of our other DOT employees, which are the UCDL drivers. Then we also have a non-DOT policy, which governs the non-driver, which would be most of your clerical administration, those types of things. These three mirror each other because I don't want somebody getting something somebody else isn't getting. So these are almost identical. The only thing that's changed are the federal registered numbers. If you'll look, this one has the one that references the FTA. The federal motor carrier one references the federal motor carrier. And the non-DOT has no references to any federal. The major change is we, our proposal is to be a zero tolerance policy, which means if you have a positive test, you are immediately terminated. That took our policy down from 20-some pages to what you see here. We still have to, after a positive test, give them the references, the referrals to the substance abuse professionals. But we don't have to follow them through the process anymore, which means there's no requirements for follow-up testing or return-to-duty testing or any of those types of things. We just turn a loop, basically. So that's it in a nutshell. I believe that the city attorney listed all three of them. What you have is the FTA one because that's the only one that you have to officially approve.
And this policy would only affect bus drivers and dispatchers?
This particular policy you're looking at, yes, because that's all that falls under the FTA policy.
I know drug-free workplace may act 1988, but zero tolerance, but drug-free workplace is zero tolerance. Even though they're used interchangeably, they mean.
Very different things.
Very different. So zero tolerance doesn't necessarily mean a testable amount. It means any, any measurable amount or any quantity with any of the drugs listed would be zero tolerance to your buyer.
That's correct.
So if you have it in your possession, if you have it in your pocket in your vehicle. Now, is there any provisions for searching employees' vehicles once they're on city property? Is that zero tolerance?
That would be under the non-DOT policy. All of our policies, including our personnel policy, allows for property searches.
And is there any time that dispensation would be given to an employee? Because it's in here. And I was wondering why, why would anybody allow that? Why would any employee?
Speaking of my phone.
I don't think you're right. It's not working. Okay. And the question was, Dawn, can you hear me? I can't even hear myself. Okay.
It's more than quiet.
Why, why would any employee be given dispensation? Why would that be included in the drug policy?
It's a federal requirement.
Give an exemption to somebody for some person?
That we have that ability to do that, yes.
So how would that affect the other two drug-free workplace or environment?
Because we have three policies, testing policies in addition to the personnel policy, which includes the drug-free workplace. We have to put the exceptions in the testing policies. Our personnel policy does not allow for exceptions.
Any, any three of them?
Any three of them.
And I did notice, and maybe it's in the city of La Junta, the free workplace, there's no tolerance, a special statement about marijuana use? Because Colorado is special in the fact that it is legal for medicinal and recreational, but not if you test positive for it in the workplace, you're still subject to termination, correct?
That's correct. If you are impaired on the work, while you are at work, if you are impaired and you have a positive test, you are impaired at work. And that would be immediate termination regardless of which you're impaired with.
Okay.
Whether it's marijuana or, our five-panel testing still tests for LSD, so. And maybe, I know, right? And maybe next year, they, they're talking about adding fentanyl and norfentanyl because of the global situation. So that may come in 2026.
Do we have an existing contract with the vendor for testing? Or would they be sent to, that's, blood test is $600.
So blood tests are not recognized by the DOT except in an eight, no, there does not acceptable period. All they do is urine or, all they do is bodily fluids. That includes saliva screening tests. We have five staff members who are certified to do screening tests. We also have two staff members who can do the urine collection. And then our third-party administrator is ProCom out of Pueblo. And they provide the lab, they provide the medical review officer.
Okay. That's a terrifying question. I didn't realize that there was two other drug policies. I was looking at this one. When I saw the last page, that the bus drivers and the dispatcher. Hopefully this one is all encompassing, all of them.
So the federal motor carriers, we name in that appendix by, by title. So it would be, for instance, street maintenance workers, sanitation drivers, sanitation collectors, street maintenance workers, water maintenance workers, anybody whose job duties require them to have a CDL. They're required to fall under DOT regulations.
I guess one question builds on another. I know my fellow townspeople are looking at it. But, or say the point 04 for alcohol content. So if it takes an hour from the time an employee is noticed to be maybe under the influence of alcohol specifically and that test is requested and they have to travel to Denver an hour. So is it the time of testing? Or would you extrapolate back at the time when it was noted that they were exhibiting signs?
Why would they drive to Denver?
No, that when they'd be taken to, I mean, to Pueblo to test.
No. So we would do a screening test. If the screening test was positive, then we have to breath alcohol technicians on staff. And we have a evidentiary breath machine here. And we would do all of our testing onsite. There would be no reason to transport. The only thing that we. The only thing that we use Pueblo for is for the medical review officer and the lab. They're also responsible for our random draws.
If you ever need a day off, Paul will fill in for you.
Well, surely with five of us certified, somebody will be here.
No, 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 I'll, I'll, Paul.
We can get Paul to do it.
Can you entertain a motion?
You should, no, really.
Yeah, you should.
It's all you.
I'll hope that we accept the proposed drug testing curriculum policy we did submit.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, a last for your vote. Passes five, zero.
And if you'd like to see those other two policies, I can have them.
I'll watch it.
I'll watch them, I'll send them to you. Why, why not? I'll just send them out.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Keep that application that you're certified to.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get, I'll get.
All right, Mrs. Harris, I'm just kidding, so. Pam is here to do this next one, and we also have Julie in the audience, so after Pam's done with her presentation, if Julie wants to say something, or you have questions over, she's ready on standby, right, Julie?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we have an application up for, that the Tourism Board approved, and we're passing it on to the City Council for recommendations, since it's over our amount for approval. This is for the National Life Women Involved in Farm Economics Conference, that's coming to La Junta, October 23rd through 25th in La Junta. It will be at Otero College. They're expecting between 100 and 125 people. This is the, it's a three-day convention, 49th annual, I stand that right? Yeah, I took, I took notes when Julie was presenting. Three-pronged goals for life is to educate, support, and advocate. So they are asking for $5,000 for sponsorship, and the Tourism Board voted favorably to recommend this for final approval from council.
If anyone has any questions for Pam or Julie?
I, I'm supportive, but I'm curious to learn more about the process. This is the first time since I've been on council that we've had a sponsorship request. So how, how often do you see sponsorship requests? Is this?
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't, like we did Royal Philanthropy Days, we've done other ones like that, that are larger conferences that come in, so. And this one, you know, we do have our application out there, so anybody's able to apply, and then we take it for consideration. So we, I mean, from a, from a, I think, looking at it always from a tourism perspective, so they're looking at having between 100 and 125 people are flying and driving, some on Amtrak, so it seems like a majority of these people are going to be coming from out of La Junta.
So that's sort of the metric.
Yeah, I mean, it. Yeah, looking at it from a tourism perspective, we always have to consider heads and beds, so if, if they're going to be staying in the hotels, will they be then paying them to the lodging tax? And then, you know, this, Julie even talked about maybe trying to get them to come back for their 50th annual, she worked really hard to recruit them to come here. So I think, I, I think conventions and conferences are sometimes not seen as tourism, but they're a huge tourism aspect, when you bring that many people that are staying for three days at a convention. So it's just another aspect of tourism, and it might even be off days, you know, the 23rd is going to be the, what, Thursday through Saturday, so that would be maybe when our hotels aren't at capacity during the week. So those are all things we kind of take into consideration. Royal Philanthropy Days, we've had, you know, it, you see the boost that it brings to the community. And I think this is, these are just a great way to highlight La Junta to people that might not normally have been exposed by being in a conference.
And why, I think it's a good use of the tourism.
Any other questions for Pam or Julie?
I noticed that they reference the farm bill and the urgency of it. Is it considered a PAC, considered a political action?
Get it out, Julie.
When I say PAC, I mean Political Action Committee, do you use any funding that you receive from donations or?
No.
Okay.
No, no, we do advocacy work, but we're, we don't associate with PACs. So I, I do want to thank you and just let you know that I'm excited about bringing the convention to La Junta, and our, our organization really suffered during COVID, and we're trying to build it back. And I need La Junta to help me do that, because getting them to the convention, I think, is important. So I just want you to know that our registration packets are going out this week, and their labels go to go on the front, but on the back, it says, "Visit La Junta." We're using your little QR code, which gives them all the information they need to know about where to stay, what to eat, what to see while they're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Can I entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the $5,000 sponsorship request for the National Women Involved in Farm Economics Convention.
I'll second.
You got beat, Paul. Any other discussion? If not, a last for your vote. And that passes unanimously, six, nothing. Now you got my yes, Julie.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to committee and board reports. Any committee and board reports? All right, City Manager Report, Michael, you're up.
Yes, sir. So I sent out an email, I don't know, probably a week or two ago, about the CML District meeting coming up on the 25th in Los Angeles. If anyone would like to go, let us know, or let Mel know, we will get you signed up. It's over in Los Angeles, it starts at 7:30, I believe. It's a good opportunity to link up with all the other municipalities here within the district, just kind of chit-chat about things, and there's always a speaker, the food's always pretty good. So if anyone wants to go, let us know, we should get you signed up and on the list. Couple things, couple projects going on. 14th Street over there, the water, the big water tie-in that the guys have been working on over there, they're just about to wrap up with that. We put some new fire hydrants out on Park and Raton. Tom was super excited to talk about the Poopy Press, because we haven't had, we hadn't said Poopy Press at an open meeting in a while, so I'm going to go ahead and bring up the Poopy Press. It is done, complete, is waiting for us to get our building done, it's going to contain it. That should be about six or eight weeks down the road before we get it here, or get it in La Junta onsite, and get it, get it put together and built, and then get the, get the press actually installed. We're going to be doing some flu shots for employees here in September. Dawn talked way too fast for me to write the dates down, so, but they're coming for those that want the flu shots this year. Also, Martin and the boys, they're going to be getting going over on 10th Street, between Barnes and Maple, getting that curb on the north side done, to make it look much, much better. They're also going to be doing a stormwater inlet over there as well, to help, help some of the stormwater that happens over, over that section. There's a couple things coming up in October that Supervisors want, want y'all to know about, city cleanup, we do, we doing that in October, there'll be, Martin's putting together a list of, you know, dews and dumps, and what you can throw away, what you, what will take, what you, what we won't take, so be looking for that. Also, Fire Prevention Week is in October. Early Settlers Days, give a shameless plug for that, coming up this weekend. Stuff's going on from sunup to well after sundown, so I think there's plenty of opportunities for everybody to get out and enjoy the day, and enjoy all the activities, and enjoy social lives and whatnot. Oh, Brock and I are still putting together the Property Maintenance Buzz Tour that the council has requested, hoping we can get that done, if not this month, but definitely in October, we can take care of. Other than that, that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
On the property management tour, can we get a, a list of the properties that we have sent out?
That's a big list, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And if there are any specific properties, because we, we didn't plan to go to every single property on the list, just because, yeah, that would take us a little, that'd be a, that'd be a heck of a, heck of a tour. But if there are specific properties that council members would be interested in, if you'll let me know, let Brock know, we'll be sure they, they are specifically on the list. But in the meantime, yes, we can generate that list and, and get that out. Mel, is that something you can do? Okay, perfect, thanks much. Yep, we'll get that out. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Michael?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Well, Michael already mentioned one of these, community events and any other council comments?
Hi, I'll talk briefly about the tour to San Juan Day Trail. It's, they call it a half-century, it's a bike ride, 50 miles from La Junta to Los Angeles and back, and the date of this will be Saturday, September 27th. The check-in time is at 6:00 a.m., and the ride will actually start at 8:00. The registration fee is $75. All the proceeds of this are going to be going to the Arkansas Valley Regional Medical Center, the Health Fund, the Central Healthcare Programs, medical equipment, community health initiatives that directly benefit the Arkansas Valley region. So if you have any questions about that, there's a sign-up sheet, and it's online, and you can contact Eric, who that's left, the foundation of the hospital.
Anything? Want to talk about early settlers?
Sure. Michael mentioned the early settlers' day is on Saturday, September 6th. Better Together is the theme, and lineup would be, we have posters all over the businesses, and then you can also visit the local Chamber of Commerce office. We have a 8 o'clock, there'll be a three-on-three basketball tournament, and then the 9:00 a.m. is the community breakfast with the parade starting at 10:00. And there's an itinerary on Facebook, and, as I said, at all the businesses and the Chamber of Commerce office. We look forward to everyone coming that can make it, except for Pam, she's not going to be here, right? Thank you.
Of course, if you can't make it, we'll be live on CECO News. And you can watch, too.
Any other community events? Okay, governing body reports. I'll just say that Paul will have a, a blurb to email out until we get further clarification on that from the hospital. We do have, is it three pages?
Yeah, two.
After meeting with Ron Hogan, Paul met with him as well, too. It's something that we want to share with council, but we're not sure if council can share with everybody else. So you guys will be getting the information until we get further clarification. At least that's something we'll be getting once a month. I also have an audit that I need to send out to you guys from the hospital, it's just been updated again today. So now that that's been updated, I'll send that to Mel, and she could send that out to you guys as well, too. That's required, that they send us that audit, but that's also just for the council one, so you guys have to keep that to yours. Any other governing body reports?
Not a report, but a question about the vacancy that we have. Not sure, it, it doesn't seem like there's much traction in the code for how to fill a vacancy, other than the City Council can vote on a vacancy, and I'm assuming then we make nominations?
So, well, it's been the standard practice, I mean, it's not written down in rules, is we open the vacancy, you know, they mentioned it earlier, you know, it should have been up, well, by the time we got done with our renewal, that, that packet was already set out. I talked to Mel today, whether we look at opening it up tomorrow until the 11th, for anybody that's interested, that means on the 15th, if we do have some, some people that are interested, that we can then have that in our package, and into letters of interest, go over that, and then make nominations on, on the 15th. That still puts us within 30 days. What I did want to ask, since you brought that up, is we do have an, an open spot on our utility board now, and that vacancy doesn't say 30 days on it in, in the charter, but I still wanted to put that out the same as the council position, so that way that, if anyone's interested, to put that in by the 11th as well, too, so we can get that, that moving at least.
Didn't we make an announcement already of the utility board vacancy, or is this the first of the council?
No, it was kind of there. Oh, that was a bad? So we'll, we'll look into that, but at, at least we're not bound by the 30-day on, on the utility board one.
And when they, they put their letter of intent or whatever we do, they would just serve until the election?
So, yeah, so if, if we get them back on the, and this is just hypothetical, let's say we get two, if that is, that's great, but probably get one. But they would then, we would do that at the front of the meeting, they could go on to the rest of that meeting, the 6th, the 20th, and then the first, maybe the first meeting in November before the election. So if it's someone that is not already running, just, you only get three meetings before that new person takes over for the election. If that makes sense.
So in the past, with Elaine's resignation, we got zero interest for that position?
I don't, I don't have the greatest memory, I can recall, we did have a different city attorney at that point, they would have worked with, with Mel to see what, what would the, the actual.
All right, I might suggest, you know, we put some other things in writing. This seems like something that should be in writing. It's, it's very ambiguous, and I think we're doing something totally different than was done at least last time, and to me, this seems like something that we should put in writing.
I think that's done. When we talk about writing, we would do a resolution, and we could certainly entertain any that anyone wants to suggest, or I can draft one. I had a, we, we used a draft resolution that was at least circulated to Mel and to our mayor when we were preparing for the Thursday meeting, but I don't know if we, we didn't really discuss how we would memorialize what happened on Thursday. My assumption, though, is that we would circulate a resolution for the next packet, for the next meeting. But then if there are other things we want to put in writing, because what, so far, what we would be memorializing is what we voted on, what you all voted on last Thursday. But if there are things that you would like to offer, Senator Joe, if we could, and we'll try to understand what the discussion might look like, or what the resolution might need, if we're going to expand the discussion to further issues regarding filling the vacancy. Because I agree, whatever we decide, we should be thorough and specific about what it is that we've done, because it is true that I have no idea what happened with the Elaine vacancy. It's not something that we've, there's nothing that was made a record so that we could follow it this time.
So if you can, because that's on it, and it's set up, too, so we're all up to speed on it.
Just one other question then about planning ahead for meetings. With the, the budget hearing for the public, it is in the code that there needs to be at least a 10-day notice, and I think it has to be done by October 15th. So there's not a whole lot of dates that would work between now and then, and I, I just, I think that we can do a better job of announcing, we meet twice a month, I think it's reasonable if we're doing something that's important, like putting out a city council vacancy, or having a budget, a proposed budget hearing, that we put it out in a council meeting, that it's happening in the future, instead of things being posted without them being discussed at council meetings. I think it improves our ability to be transparent if we talk about it in council meetings.
I think they have been in the past, when you've had openings, just like you did now the utility board, and they said that they did it again, usually they are mentioned at the council meetings. Not something that we didn't bring up.
We'll put some dates together, like I'll do, like do a full, see what works for the budget hearing one. But make sure you guys all respond to those emails on, on what dates work for you, too, so. Anything else? If not, I'll, during this meeting, thank you all for coming out tonight.